Okay.
So today, we're doing a study session on midterm exam. For the purposes of the discussion session, you're expected to kind of look these things over in whatever detail you wish to do. And as usual, post a question or concern or something up here, and then come back and post a couple of answers or more questions, whatever you want. I'm just looking for three quotes. Yeah, some of them are wrong. Those are actually answers, which is good. I like long answers rather than long questions. There is a study guide. I hope you all had a look at that. And then a series of problem sets.
So under study guide... Whoops.
You're responsible for the stuff in chapters one through seven, all the stuff we've talked about. But if you look at some of the old videos and the things in the chapters, there are things that we've taken out this time. And so I'm not going to ask you questions about DNA sequencing technology or PCR. I'm not going to ask you to align sequences based on conserve sequence. The only things that we talked about were alignments based on the structure of the RNA. I'm not going to ask you to be able to generate trees. You notice that, I'm sure, in the old exams if you had a look. I did a lot of that. And get the take-home part of the exam that you already have doesn't have any trees to generate in that. How to study? Read through the textbook, look at the lecture videos and class notes. Old exams, keeping in mind that this class changes every year, and there are things that are different as a result. Do the problem set. And then if you wish, I've got questions for thought at the end of each of the chapters in the textbook. Bearing in mind... What was this thing? It's not working. Bearing in mind that a lot of these questions are pretty open-ended. They're really designed to make you think, questions for thought. They're not really designed to be straightforward. What is the answer to this thing?
Let's see.
Reminders and suggestions. I am not going to ask questions on the in-class part of the exam that are going to take you a lot of time to solve and sort out. That's what the take-home part of the exam is for. Problem sets, manipulating tree diagrams, converting dendograms and things. That's something that you need ruler and pencil and, you know, all that kind of stuff to do. And some people are faster at it than others. There will be a mixture of multiple choice problems, short answer essay questions on the exam. Again, if you looked at the old exams, you've seen that. Don't pack. But if you guys have been around the block, you know how to take those. Go back and answer the ones you knew right off the bat first. Don't insist on going through them in order. I give you plenty of space on the exams to answer the question. If you find yourself running out of space, then you're giving me much more of an answer than I expect. I don't grade by the pound. I look at them, and I'm looking for an answer to the exact question I asked. I don't want you to talk about it. I just want you to answer the question. Does that make sense? And then the discussion session material is not on the exam. This thing is being slow. Any questions about this as a study guide? Have you guys looked at this already and seen this? Good. So for the rest of the time, I'm going to throw my hands in the air and say, what do you want to talk about? What problems do you want me to do? Have you had a look at these things yet? Obviously, one thing I'm not going to pull up and talk about is the take-home part of the exam. What kind of things do you have problems with? Structure alignments, manipulating trees, interpreting trees, making predictions, and then some thought questions, right? Yeah?
So I had a question about interpreting trees.
Okay. Was it about a problem set or just something in general?
It was in the problem set.
Okay. Let me pull that up. Okay. So which one?
It was question 2A. So which are the two most closely related species?
2A, which of these, which are the two most closely related species? So this requires you to have a ruler, right? Because closely related means what's the shortest distance? And so what's the shortest distance between any two leaves in this tree? It's actually a close call. You do have to measure it. It's between Limulus and Drosophila. It's about 5% shorter. Does that make sense? So again, you're measuring from here to here, from here to here, and comparing it from here to here and here to here. This one's quite a bit longer. Which is an interesting question. Which are the two least closely related species? Paramesium and Drosophila. That is, what's the longest path in this tree? And that's all the way through here. In this one, let's just go ahead and do all these. So which is probably the outgroup? Paramesium. It sticks way out here. It's clearly something that was specifically chosen to be outside of the group of the other species. If you know what these organisms are, that helps a lot. Do you guys know what these are? Homo, of course, is humans. Proporia is the urchin. Stella is the starfish. Drosophila is a fly. Limulus is a horseshoe crab. Limpurcus is a worm, earthworm, and Scentrabus is a realm worm. Based on the outgroup, circle the last common ancestor of the remaining creatures. Is it this? Is it this? Is it this? Yeah, right there. That's the root of this southern part of the tree. Circle the two main groups in this tree then, other than the outgroup. Well, if this is the last common ancestor, the two groups would be then the two groups of organisms that emerged from that common ancestor. And so it would be these things and these things. This is an actual tree. That's how metazomes are related to each other. The two major groups of metazomes. Which is most distantly related to Drosophila other than the outgroup? So excluding Paramesium, what's the most distant relative of Drosophila? What's the longest path? Stella. Which species in this tree is most closely related to Homo? So that would be Propuria, right? It's the shortest path. And redraw this tree as a phenogram. You guys know how to do that? Do you want me to go through that or not? Is that a please? All right, so I'm going to pull this up. And I'm going to get a piece of paper here to act as a cheat ruler. Okay. So I'm going to start. Actually, what I'll do is I'm going to cheat a little bit. I'm going to slide this... whoops, slide this down. There. Okay. So here's Paramesium. I'm going to start with the outgroup. And so I'm looking for a branch that's this long, right? Just exactly 11 and 1/2 inches long. Now, the outgroup is kind of weird because I have to figure out in a phenogram where I'm going to put the root. I can put the root anywhere I want along this branch. So I'm going to put it here. So I'm going to draw this. If I can do that without erasing the name. There. I want to draw a vertical line. I can make it as long as I want, right? Or short, doesn't matter. All right, so now I've got another node. Now at this point, I'm... so I've done this bit. Now I can do this bit. And so I've got a branch that is also that long. So what do I do? Draw this down however I want, and then it goes out that far. So this branch is this branch, and it's the same length. And then I've got another node. I can make this however long or short I want. I know I've got four things off of it, so I'm kind of leaving my space for four. And now I can go either way I want, but I'll go this way. And so I've got one this long. This long. Limpurcus. Something like that. Then over this way, I've got one. I'm going to pull that up a little bit just to give myself some room. Okay, so I'm half done. And you just keep doing this. How long is this branch? I'll go straight to this one. Do that. Which one was that? It's that one. Doesn't matter what order I do it in, does it?
So the... As long as the total horizontal distance is the same.
Yeah, exactly.
But in a vertical distance...
The vertical distance isn't relevant because the scale bar runs this way. Stella and Proporia is the last one. That's not right. It's that one.
This would be a take-home question.
Yeah, this would be a take-home question. I wouldn't really expect you to be able to do this otherwise. Now, I could ask you, you know, what's the evolutionary distance from Drosophila to Limulus if I have a scale bar? Because then you could just take a piece of paper and measure it out. So that's it. Really nothing to it.
Are there other ones on here? I think I gave you a... okay. Any questions about this bit?
Which you can't see. Which organism is the closest relative of Chromation venosum? This may be a little tricky. I'm not asking you which one is most similar to it. I'm asking you which one is its closest relative. And so think siblings or cousins. What's the closest cousin to Chromation venosum? Where's Chromation? What am I saying? Chromation venosum. Well, in this case, it's pretty easy, right? It's E. coli. Let's see, which organisms are the outgroup? That would be Sulphololus and Methanococcus.
Why would that change? You said that you're asking which is the closest relative to you. How would that change it?
So for example, let me see if I can give you an example. So the closest relative of Thermus thermophilus. If I'm asking you what's the closest relative of the organism, then there's no doubt the closest common ancestor is this one. And so Dinococcus radiodurans would be the answer. But if I ask you which is most similar in terms of the sequence used to generate this tree, if you measured it out, it might actually be Thermomicrobium rosium. The distance might be similar. I kind of doubted in this example, but it's close. You see that, right? And so two sequences can be more similar even if they're not the most close relative. And that has to do with differences in branch length. That's probably the best example in this tree. Yeah?
Can you provide the two different ways to answer that? Two different questions to answer. How you would ask your questions where you get the different answers, whether it's...
Let me see if I've got... I mean, there's a better tree. Here we go.
Well, no, that doesn't help either. So if I were to ask you which sequence is most similar to Thermus thermophilus, then what I would be asking you is what is the shortest branch length, right? Or which organism is closest in evolutionary distance? Then I would be asking you... I think this is not... Then I would be asking you, what's the shortest distance from this in the tree? And maybe that's this one, but maybe it's this one. Particularly, if this branch was much shorter, then you could see it could easily be shorter from here to here than it would be from here to here. And so this would be the shorter evolutionary distance. It would be closer in evolutionary distance. But if I ask you which organism is most closely related, then again, you have to think of this as a genealogy. And clearly here, then, that Thermus and Dinococcus share a common ancestry that's more recent than to anybody else. So that's a fine distinction. Whether I'm asking about, you know, evolutionary distance or close relatives, thinking of these things as organisms rather than distances among sequences.
Could you answer that question? If you drew a straight line down the graph at the end of Thermus thermophilus?
If I were...
If you drew like a vertical line, where it ends, would it be the one that's closest to that vertical line?
No, because you don't know how deeper goes. And so for example, Thermatoga maritima is... Even though it's a shorter distance, you have to go deeper in the tree to get to the more recent common ancestor. So here's a question. What's the... well, it's going to be in here. Actually, it's not. There must be a question. Oh, here we go. So which organism is the outgroup? Those two. Where then is the root of the tree based on that outgroup? And so if this is the outgroup, where it connects to the rest of the tree is the root. Right there. What is the evolutionary distance between Thermus thermophilus and Thermomicrobium rosium? So I'm going to pull this down. And pull this down so you can see it. Thermus and Thermomicrobium. So I don't need a ruler to do this really, at least to estimate it. So where's Thermus thermophilus? Thermus is right here. And Thermomicrobium rosium is right here. So where's the last common ancestor of those organisms? Right here, right? So I can measure this line, this line, this line, and this line, and add that up. An easier way to do that is to realize that that's the same as this plus this and this, right? Because the vertical lines add no distance. And so if I do that... And it should come out the same either way. It's just that it's more... it's easier to do it this way. Let's see. Try to be quantitative here. I come right back to this. So I've got one full length plus this. Here's .05, .1, .15, .2... .2, .25. Call that .28. I have an answer. Of course, it's a lot easier if you have a ruler, right? But if you do a ruler, then you have the numbers and you have to do the math on it. Any questions about that? You want to go through the rest of them or you want to jump to some other problem? Want somebody?
Or the rest on this set, just like that?
So the rest on this set are similar to that. So what's the evolutionary distance between Chloroflexis and Methanococcus? Which organisms are most closely related? Here we go. Which organisms are most closely related organisms to Chloroflexis and Thermomicrobium? So Chloroflexis and Thermomicrobium, they are related. What organism or organisms are the relatives of those two? That is, which ones share the most recent ancestry? That would be Dinococcus and Thermus.
Would you expect both of those?
I would expect both of those.
Because it's that organism?
Because it's the organisms are the closest relative. If I ask you which organism was most similar to or which organism had the least evolutionary distance, then it would be Thermus. But since I'm asking about how closely the organisms are related, it would have to be both of those. These would be like cousins of each other, right? Let's see, EM3 is an unknown organism. What is its closest relative in the tree? And so it would actually be both of those. Because relative assumes organism. Let's see, excluding the outgroup, which is the most primitive organism or sequence? That's an easy one to do. Because here's the root, right? What does primitive mean? Primitive means least change. That is shortest distance. So all you're looking for is the branch that's closest to this root. And if you just scan an imaginary vertical line, the first thing you get to is the most primitive sequence. Thermatoga maritima. Which is the most highly evolved, in other words, the least primitive sequence. Other than the outgroup. And so scan that vertical line until there's only one left, and you get to E. coli. Circle the last common ancestor of Chromation venosum and Dinococcus radiodurans. Here's Chromation, here's Dinococcus. And so this is the last common ancestor of those two creatures. Redraw this tree as a dendrogram. Okay, that's going to take you some time, right? But it's the same process I just showed you in reverse. Think about this mentally of just taking all these vertical lines and collapsing them to that node. And then you can rearrange the branches however you want. Which one would you like to do next? Yeah? Yes.
So structure alignment.
I'm again going to pull this. Do you want me to just start with the first one and go down?
Okay. Let's see. I'm going to have to pull this down. All right.
Draw the secondary structures of the sequence in this alignment. So here's what the structure looks like. Here's some examples. You'll notice that although we haven't really talked about it, I tell you right here what the structure is, the dot bracket thing, right? So you've got one base pair, two base pairs, three base pairs, four base pairs. This thing pairs with this thing. Whatever is there pairs with that. Likewise, this with this, this with this, and this with this. So how do you... I mean, we can draw whichever one you want. So here's... and you can just do a substitution. GGGG. GGGG. CUUC. CUUC. UA afterwards. And the loop is GAUN. GAUN. And you're done. And you can use that same process to do any of them. Notice that this one has a gap right here. That means there's only three nucleotides in the loop. And so the loop looks like UUU. Whereas here, you've got a base pair missing and a CUUG in the loop. You've got a U missing here, and so you just go to an A. I mean, it's not homologous to that U, but it's in the same part of the structure. That's it. That's all there is to these. Now, doing the alignment's a little bit harder. And so here we have a bunch of structures that we want to align. So let's just lay this one out. What's the best way to do that? We've got CCCUC. And we know that this is... each of these is going to pair to something downstream, right? We've got a loop that's UUCG. And we have GGGG and a U. And we know that this is paired with this. This is paired with this. This is paired with this. And this is paired with this. That's what these mean, right? Okay, so what... how do you do this one? Well, the first thing you have to recognize is that you've got a nucleotide here that isn't present here. So what do you do in an alignment when you've got a sequence with a nucleotide that's in one of them but not the others? That's what gaps are for, right? So you have to add a gap right here because you need to put an A there in this one. GACG. GACG. The loop is longer. You've got an extra nucleotide. So we're going to have to add a gap up here, aren't we? Now, where am I going to put it? I can look at this thing and I, you know, I don't see a lot of similarity between them. But one thing I notice is that you've got purine, permitting, 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 purine, permitting, 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 purine. Probably I would put that G as the extra base. I'm going to give you a lot of latitude on this, you know, on exam sort of a thing because we didn't talk about how to align sequences. This is a subtlety. I would allow you to put the gap wherever you want. But I'm going to put that right here, and then I'm going to put the G across from that. I'm not drawing these...
Put an extra C on the show.
Should be CCUC.
Oh, I've got... I'm sorry. I put the wrong sequence. Yeah, so... yeah, there we go. UUCG. UUCG. I looked at the wrong one, yeah. So I'm going to add a gap right here and then put GUCCA and then CGUC. And I've got an extra base here too, right? So again, I'm going to have to... whoops. UA. I'm going to have to put a gap up there to accommodate that. And I can just do this for all of them. Now, what are the problems? We've got all the bases. We've got one of these. We've got four base pairs. We've got a loop. We've got four base pairs and then two. But what about that? Where's that going to go? That's a nucleotide that isn't present in the other sequence. So those other sequences are going to need gaps. It's between these two base pairs, right? So I'm going to add a gap right here, and that's where the A right here is going to go. Just as an aside, this is the problem with RNA sequence alignments when they get pretty big is that every idiosyncrasy in a... every idiosyncrasy in a particular RNA means you're adding gaps to everybody else. And if you look at really big alignments of RNAs, they look like wastelands of gaps. Because these gaps just get bigger and bigger and, and, and start to fill up more and more of the alignment. Okay, what about this one? Problem with this one, means you would start off with a couple of gaps, because it doesn't have any of these leading nucleotides. But the helix is only three nucleotides long. So you're gonna have to decide which of these is missing. And, and, you know, it's probably this one here, but it doesn't really matter. And so it would be, C, U, U, gap. Because this nucleotide, there's no nucleotide right here paired to a nucleotide over there. And then you would put the U, but it's a U, 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 so there's gonna be two gaps in the loop instead of just one, and so forth, right? Does that make sense?
For the first one on sequence D, it's totally okay to have a U to a G when we end up putting the secondary structure on there?
Yeah. Yeah, U, U, G pairs are perfectly good in RNA structure. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah. Yeah, U, G. In, in fact, on, on a technical point, they're particularly common in this context where you have a particular kind of a loop. That happens all the time. UGs are, I mean, for people who study RNA structure, UGs are really interesting. And, and that wouldn't be U gods. So, I'm gonna go ahead. Whoops. What about this one? So you've got a structural alignment, and you're given another RNA, and you have to add it to that alignment. Do you know how to do that? So, you've got a three or four base pair helix, a loop, a three base pair helix, a loop, a short connection, and a tail. You have a four base pair helix, a loop, short connection, a three base pair helix, and a tail. Just put it in. So this is four base pairs, this is already four base pairs, so let's just lay it in. C, 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 excuse me, U, C. I'm gonna put the other side in. G, 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 G. I've got a U, U, C, G, four nucleotide loop, I've got spaces for four nucleotides, I'm just gonna put it in there. I've got a two nucleotide joiner, I've got space for two, why not? U, A. Got a three nucleotide loop, C, U, U. Back the other side, it's A, A, G, the tail, I'll worry about that. The loop is three, U, 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 I've got space for four. But notice that this one only has three, and I've got a gap right there, that's probably a good place to put that gap, isn't it? So, U, 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 gap. I've got space for anywhere from zero to three nucleotides right here. I've got two, U, A, gap, I'm done. The, the trick to these is to realize that the alignment done in this way and the secondary structures are two sides of the same coin. The, the, the structure is encoded in the alignment. And the alignment specifies all the structures. This is why RNA alignments are so much kind of analysis that have protein origins. What's another one you guys wanna talk about? The, the ones who just don't know how to start. I'm gonna pick one at random. Yeah?
I have a general question. So for questions such as, you know that there's an unknown organism that has a relative with a certain identity, then there, there's a space to write like as many things as we know about that organism. Can we use any resource to?
Yes. Yeah, so I, I gave you, so the question is, or, or I ask you a question about organisms. Remember that in the directions for the exam, I tell you, you can use any online material you want, textbooks, whatever, fine. That, that's the purpose of that. So I'm gonna, since you asked that, you've opened the door for me. Okay, so this is cheesy, right? All I did was point you to some midterm exams. So the midterm exam one, take home two thousand seventeen. Let me look that up. Take home spring two seventeen. You cultivated an unknown organism from a dust sample. Dust has got some really cool stuff in it, by the way. And have obtained its SSU RNA sequence after running a couple of preliminary trees, you zoomed in on, on the following tree of relatives. It's a big, long scale bar. Based on this tree, how closely can you identify this organism? Can you put a name on this thing? Actually, you can.
Really?
Yes, not a species name. But you can put a genus name on this. Look at the common ancestor of Mycobacterium, the genus, all the way out here. This is the last common ancestor of the genus Mycobacterium. Your organism is in that group, it is a member of that genus. So you have a Mycobacterium species. You have no idea what species, except that you know it isn't any of these. But you know that it is related particularly to this group, the Aviomybacterium tuberculosis group. By the way, if you wanna isolate Mycobacterium avium, where do you look? Birds, you would think, right? You know what a better source of it is? Your shower hat. Analysis of people's shower, people never change their shower hats, right? Particularly the plastic ones. Mycobacterium avium grows like crazy in shower hats, and you're breathing that stuff in every time you take a shower. Make four independent, specific, testable predictions about the properties of your organism. So what kind of predictions would you make? What do you know about the genus Mycobacterium? Acid fast? That's sort of specific, because a lot of these other organisms are acid fast, but that's pretty good. You know, it's not a mycolic acid, I'll remember, right? It turns out that the genus Mycobacterium, you know, there's an awful lot of organisms in that group, and, and a lot of them are pathogens, but a lot of them are non-pathogens. And so you cannot predict that your organism is a pathogen. What else?
It's a slow generation.
Slow generation type, if, 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 if you're, if you look closely at this tree, it turns out that these, this branch of them are the fast growing Mycobacteria, and this branch are the slow growing Mycobacteria. So that's, I mean, you, that's something you would have to look into to kind of dive into the, to the, the science of the literature about it. But I think you would probably find that even maybe on Wikipedia or something. It's rod shaped, you could, you could determine a wide, I mean, you know that it's an aerobic heterotroph. You know that it's a mesophile, and so forth and so on. What can't you predict about the organism? I mentioned one already. You cannot determine, predict whether or not this organism is a pathogen or not. Certainly, if it's a pathogen, you couldn't predict what organism it grew in, because this group infects all different kinds of creatures. The easy way to determine what you can't predict, if you know it's a member of Mycobacterium, ask yourself, what are the properties that people use to identify these? Maybe it's sugar fermentations, or not fermentations, but, uh, whether different sugars can support the growth of them. If those things are used to distinguish them, that means that some of them can do one and some use another, and so you don't know what your organism does. And so that's a thing you wouldn't know. I think pigment production is one of the things that people use to identify Mycobacteria. And so you could not predict what the pigmentation will be. But that's the kind of thing that you're looking for. It's important to know the limits of your, your, your knowledge or your predictability in this sort of situation. Do not tell me that your organism has DNA. That is not a specific prediction, right? It's an organism, of course it's got DNA. Don't tell me that, um, that your organism is in the family Mycobacteriaceae. Because you already know that, if you know it's in the genus Mycobacterium, and that's not a property of the organism, it's a, it's just a name. That's why I have to be so specific on here, is because I get people saying, oh, it's a member of the Mycobacterium, it's in, in the family Mycobacteriaceae, it's in the Phylum Acidobacteria, or, or Actinobacteria. And, and they're just piling, you know, the same answer on, over and over and over again. Does that answer your question? Do I ask anything else about this tree? No. Oh, no, I've used this cartoon before. You guys know how to do this one? We just did one of those, right? All right, so what else would you like to ask about? We've got a few minutes left, what time is it? We've, we've got five minutes. What do you think the hardest thing about these problem sets? Which is the hardest problem set to do? Whoops, I didn't mean to do that. Yeah?
I got it, okay, so, um, the ones where it says which branch is the least reliable, or like which?
Yes. So let me see if I can find a tree real quick. Where would that be? I think all of these. Okay, so here's a trick. Which is the least reliable tree, or which least, least reliable branch or node? You might use those two interchangeably. These are the, how do you measure reliability? That's the bootstrap value, right? And those are the numbers here. And so, these numbers represent the percentage of tree, of bootstrap trees that contain this node or that branch. So what's the smallest number? I just about drew on the screen. The smallest number is this thirty-four. And so this branch or this node, it turns out it's mathematically the same, is the least reliable in the tree. What's the most reliable branch in this tree? Well, there's lots of them, right? This one? That's a hundred percent. Here's a hundred percent, a hundred percent. This is a pretty good tree, actually. Oh, there's ninety-nine percent, that's, there's a hundred percent.
So when you have a thirty-four that far back into the?
Yeah.
Does that say anything about the sequence, is it right? Is that them unreliable, or?
No, it has to do then with the branching order. And so if this is only thirty-four percent, you have to ask yourself, what are the alternatives? Well, first of all, you know that there have to be a lot of them, because if this is thirty-four percent, but that's the, the most common branch, the most common, all the other options must have occurred at less than forty, thirty-four percent frequency. What those are gonna be is probably these branches jumping in to that. Here's a fifty percent, it might be this archeglobus jumping down there or something like that. And so there's probably a lot of uncertainty about, it, it, it probably is the interaction between all the alternatives, branches between these two. What else can I say about that, about the bootstraps? Again, anything above fifty percent is pretty reliable. And so, I would argue that this tree is, is excellent, and that the major concern is, is with the relationship between this group, everything out, out from here, and these things here. You might also be seeing this group jump out across that branch. Let me, is that, I don't remember, I asked a question, does that answer it?
Do you wanna make one of these, would you want to find something higher than thirty-four, or is that?
It depends on what your question is, right? I mean, if, so, if you're, if you got this tree as a result of an analysis, of what you're interested in is, okay, you know, here's this, here's this organism, Halloarchila maris mortuae, how is it related? How these things are related to each other is irrelevant to you, you don't care. And so this tree is perfectly reasonable as far as that goes in terms of sorting out, you know, which of these organisms is related to each other and how. If your question is, how are these main branches of archae related to each other, then you're in trouble. Because this tells you, you don't really know. So again, it, it depends on what, what, what you're trying to prove in your tree. In fact, one of the things I can tell you right now, it is very likely that this organism branches off here instead, and that's probably is where a lot of this uncertainty comes from. So you can imagine, that one comes over here, and now you're, you're, everything changes, right? And that one's, this one is over here, like this. All right, I think our time is up. You know, make sure to post things. I will try to keep an eye on the discussion board and, 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 and try to answer people's questions if they're not being asked by the students, all right? Good, thanks.